I wasn't at the last ceremony.
Everybody in the ceremony.
Yes, I was saying I wasn't at the last.
I'll call and order the Schenectady Renewal Agency first items, the acceptance of minutes from our June 17 meeting, entertain a motion, move Mr. Palamini, second by ZW, all in favor? Any opposed? Minutes stand adopted. Next item is Resolution 2019-09, transfer of five properties to the City of Schenectady. Entertain a motion, moved by Mr. Palamini, second by ZW, all in favor? Any opposed? Next item is Resolution 2019-10, which is the acceptance of seven properties from the City of Schenectady. By ZW, all in favor? Any opposed? Any other business to come before the agency? Move to adjourn, adjourn ZW, second by Mr. Palamini, the agency stands adjourned. Sorry, it took so long.
So, I want to open up city planning and development.
No, we don't propose safety first.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I thought you were... My apologies.
Call to order public safety, we have three items on the agenda. First item discussed on bicycle safety on Schenectady Street, Mr. Corja.
Jan, wait. Come up here, please, and you get a microphone to go with all this stuff. Thank you. So, you guys stay on your right. Apparently, we're having difficulties with... We have a couple comments on what Schenectady is doing and what residents and motorists, if they come across these, could do. Again, it's on Facebook, over there was another poster just coming down Crane Street the other day, a large group. Again, there's 10 that I counted on the video that was shown, where the youth were actually coming down Crane Street, cross right over Broadway, directed right through the traffic, stopped numerous cars, horns were sounding, and again, the kids just continued. So, I know one of our employees here who live close by on Broadway had the same thing, where they'd tear a right lane on Broadway, but the building itself was blocked off. So again, it's an issue that's out there, and I just want to let folks know that Schenectady is aware of it and what the folks are doing. So, I have Boote here just to follow up.
Thanks for that. So, we're doing a lot of things to...
This is what to do when you encounter the large groups, the youth in junior levels, age 12 to 13, 14 years old, as part of the law statutes, particularly if you have tickets at all, because when you're 16 years old, so you can issue violations. Mostly what they're doing is a violation, but definitely get us a call for it, still be dragged there. If your vehicle is damaged, that's a whole other story. If there's dangerous data, that is a crime, and that's something we can't probably be saying, dear. We can refer to the charge of replacing the alternatives which allow the tire to turn, they run away from us. To me, it's my advice, and you know, stay out of the road, you can get hurt. You, that people in vehicles can get hurt, they're kind of spoiled work, or you can hurt somebody else. It's not only, like, all the consequences, you got their actions are, what comes to them. We have those that I have staff that handles, you know, making sure the kids wear helmets, letting the kids, letting them know that they can do, being outside of the room, that's what we're doing right now. We're tracking everybody, all the groups, they would fill in the cars on them, they've stopped there, and that's...
Any questions? Comment?
Go ahead, go ahead. Just quickly, because I saw today, how about kids on motorized bicycles? One kid was flying up Genesee Street on motorized bicycle, no helmet, no anything. As soon as you can, can you help escape that?
Say, there's, there is investigation going on on that right now?
Uh, the city department, I think they're considering that, investigations, there are no other bikes going on right now. So, definitely let us know if you see them, definitely comment, let us know where they are, our city can...
Mark Lewes, he kept going back and forth, Genesee Street, this is wrong.
Okay.
Is it a place?
Okay.
Go ahead. And again, thank you for the update. I just think it's important that, you know, Schenectady, you know, to continue to place posts, getting that information out there. And again, we urge our folks, if they come across these young men, I think, I don't think I've seen females yet, it's usually, it's usually groups of young men, yeah. Police contacts Schenectady, I mean, that's really important for us. So again, if they have it on record. Again, we have so many cameras throughout the city, there's lots of ability to use our research or cameras. But again, we just don't want accidents to be happening out there either. I mean, when I got this, it was directly in front of Rogers, and this group just came around, and I was actually pulling out, and I was within inches of actually hitting on kids, and of course, it's armed, continue that. So... Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you. The other two items, just a reminder, public hearing for next month, mandating Chapter 248 with regards to Willet Street parking restriction and Campbell Avenue weight restriction. Any other business for public safety? Second? All in favor? Thank you.
So, we'll do city planning and development, so the first item on the agenda is, Mr. Wallin is going to discuss the issue of the vote for permit. You have the floor.
Permit is, vote for permit, 6:30.
So, we already did the ceremony?
No, we did that in the ceremony.
Okay, so now...
Going the other way?
No, now we're going the other way.
Shall I take the microphone?
No, you're good, you're in the middle.
So, we're looking at the city taking five vacant lot properties from Sura. These, I know it says zero on all these properties. It's only zero because there isn't a office number associated with those lots. So, we have it by section, block, and lot. We're going to be merging these five properties, Colonial Avenue, Trumbull Road, Dearborn Avenue, Clement Avenue, and Trumbull Road into the Woodlawn Preserve. These are lots that cannot be, that cannot be built upon, they're better served as part of the preserve. So, we're looking to take these properties from Sura.
Okay, any questions?
Make a motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the next on the is the transfer of seven properties from Sura.
Correct. So, these are, actually, these are a transfer of seven city-owned properties transferred to Sura. I know it's a, yes, a little different, yeah, the way it's written. So, we're looking at transferring seven properties, 2022 Williams Street, 501 Lot, South Avenue, 548 Schenectady Street, 956 Crane Street, a lot on the front Avenue, and 71 Lorraine Avenue. And I have the notes in here indicating what we're going to be merging those lots with. So, we're going to be, some of these have structures on them, and we're merging it with another property that doesn't have a structure, and some of these are just lots, double merging it with a property that has a structure, towards two vacant lots that are going to merge to make the, essentially, buildable, to make a larger lot.
Questions?
Yes, questions. So, Lathrop and Lorraine Avenue are both Woodlawn, and I'm very familiar with them. So, Lorraine is actually a house that we have been trying to get rid of and demolish for probably 10 years now, which I'm so glad this thing is on. And Lathrop Avenue was directly in back of that. And I didn't realize that we're merging with two of them. Do you have the information, or can I check with you tomorrow, who we're looking to merge these with?
So, these are, we're merging them with properties that are currently, all these properties here are owned by Sura. So, we're moving it, the only way we can merge it is they have to be in the same name of the entity that owns it. So, if we have a City of Schenectady property and a Sura property, we can't merge them together unless they have the same owner of those properties. So, what we're doing is, we're going to transfer these properties over from the city to Sura, to merge it with a lot or a property that's currently owned by Sura. That's the only way we can merge the lots. And I provided you with, I believe you all have them in the maps, those properties, showing exactly where those properties are and how we're merging them. So, the, the one, we're merging it with, is a landlocked property.
Which one?
So, it's, the Lathrop, it's the highlighted property, we're moving the property to the right of it. It will still be landlocked, and then the idea is to offer it to, actually, we're merging it with, yeah, with the property to the right of it, and then offer it to the person who owns the property in front. And then, the, the one on Lorraine, it is merging, and I can, I can identify it better on another map showing you the two that are actually going to be merged.
We're catching tomorrow on that.
Yep, yeah, I can certainly email, I can email Sam, and then everybody can get the, the exact properties that are going to be merged.
And are they going to knock down 71 then? 71 Lorraine, is that going to come down?
As far as I know, it's not.
It's, it's unbelievable. It's just...
Right, I, that's, yeah, I'm not familiar with it being on the list of demoed properties. Or properties to be, to be demolished.
So, how do we find out what Sura's going to do? We don't know yet, or?
Development to see if it's on, on their radar for demolition. I'm not familiar with it being on the list of round one.
Here, you know what we're talking about, take pictures of this.
It looks terrible, but I'm not sure structurally it's as bad as somebody else.
There's nothing left of the house, there's nothing left of it. It's, it's just covered in trees and plants, and the roof is gone, there's literally nothing left of this house. I'll send you guys pictures tomorrow.
I didn't, I put these on my phone. The structure was in better shape, if it's not, I didn't talk about it tomorrow.
It's got to come down, yeah. I'll send you, can I send you?
It sounds like it's already down.
Yeah, it is. It's unbelievable. Now, like I said, the lot that you're talking about was directly back, and it looks like a forest. And the folks next door, 60, I didn't talk about this, they're very happy. And I thought I took a picture, but I guess I didn't, so... I'll shoot it to you folks tomorrow. Just, just a little follow-up information, so we can tell the neighbors there on Lorraine that we do have a planning space in some way. Hopefully, we'll be down here.
And I'll send an email updating, sorry, I was going to send an email updating with the maps, just to identify where the properties are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. On the same note, this 2022 Williams, this is pretty bad shape too. I thought this would be demoed also. It's the same thing, the roof is falling down on the first floor, it's all covered with vegetation. So, I got more complaints about that over the last two or three years. I don't think it's structurally sound for sure, because the upper floor doesn't get the lower floor. It's got to be a lot of water, it's all covered, the front, you can hardly see the house.
I think, you're right. Some of that pictures.
Any other questions?
Once the, the merger makes it stronger, are there plans for the, for the actual lot?
As of right now, there isn't a plan for that. Part of this is to make it more enticing to somebody who would be interested in purchasing it, by enlarging the lot size, you know, obviously, I think it's a limited footprint of a lot for the, I mean, essentially the same size lot, but by putting them together, I think it makes it more desirable for somebody to want to do something with.
I'm just trying, I know where Moncrief is, I'm just trying to figure out how it, what part of Strong is. 548 Moncrief was a pretty sized lot, I know it was built in a bit.
Yeah, and I believe it's, I mean, essentially, they're, we're talking about the same, I guess, width on, on Schenectady. I think it's, I think, I believe it's 45 feet wide. And then, you're doubling the frontage on, on Strong.
Anything else?
A little bit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're in recess.
Okay, call for public service and utilities, two items on the agenda. First, the ceremony of the resolution, recognize the Rite High Program.
Yeah, just a program, actually, they just had an article on the Gazette about it, a program that focuses on STEM, intensive STEM for our youth, and, and he's working really, really hard to foster that excitement about science, recognizing this program. Although we're going to pass it tonight, I will not be in attendance at 26th meeting, I'll be out of town, so we'll be presenting it on September 9.
Second?
I'll listen to you. Aye. Okay, the other, the second one is ceremony resolution for Donna Reiki for her service at Crossing Art. And, well, it's still, it's a lot of others last meeting, and so, I thought it would be appropriate to be able to do that. It was hoping she stayed three more years, so we'd be in like 45, but it's okay.
She's almost made 43, two months, she made it till October, now 43.
So, they'd like to do the next meeting, a little bit?
Second.
All in favor?
Did you want, for the record, for the record, did you want a little bit?
Oh, sure.
Is there anything else to come?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. All right, I will, call to order government operations, we have final review for local law banning the use of plastic straws in Schenectady. Mr. Palamini?
So, a survey was asked for, was done. You will see that 70% of those restaurants and bars in the city are prohibition. They were provided the exact language as to what would be in the legislation. And, so you asked for that information, you've now received it.
So, can you tell us where the list came from?
It was, the, and Survey Monkey was created, it's an anonymous survey, so that we could get responses. The email link was sent to Mr. Solango at DSIC, and it was sent out to local businesses.
And I also think we had asked about conversation with the county with regard to whether they might be able to move forward with legislation on the county level.
Formal conversations, and there was nothing intimate, uh, immin, it's the word I'm trying to say. And several have indicated support for the city moving forward with this.
Questions?
So, thank you for doing this, Jan, I appreciate it very much. So, you know, and I just went over it one more time again today. In the legislation says a person can be fined as well for the offense. If you got to look at that, Jackson, maybe clarify that for me. And I should have looked at it, I just looked at it again, with the fines, it says person, business, entity, so on. Does that mean if I'm walking down the street with a plastic straw, be fined? Is it, I mean, stores?
You can purchase straws outside, certainly walking around, you're not going to get fined for having...
Yeah, but if you're looking to think it's a person.
But this strictly is referring to the dissemination of plastic straws. I mean, you can find the exact... So, no establishment in the city shall offer to consumers can use straw or whatever. So, yeah, the person is in there, just to cover all bases, but it's defined as individual business event from ownership. So, somebody who's actually selling, to a consumer, because it strictly refers to consumer.
So again, penalties for violations, that you're looking at, that's what I'm...
So, there's the definition of person, and then, under distribution of plastic straws prohibited, it says to consumers, so you would be selling something to consumers.
Okay, but look under your penalties, the very last page.
I understand.
The very first word says any person.
Right, and that goes back to the definition of person.
Yes, the person is me.
But if you're selling it, then you would be selling to a consumer, and you could get fined.
So, for clarification purposes, are you talking about servants and bartenders? Possibly being personally fined?
No, we're talking about the establishments.
Establishments. So, we're talking about like food vendors, like the trucks?
Yeah.
So, as we move forward, how are we letting them, them food trucks know that this is happening?
Letters can be sent out, as we discussed previously, two letters, one at some point, hopefully September, another one at the end of the year, beginning of the year. So, everybody has at least two communications of what the new legislation entails.
Other questions? I have a motion, we've not fit.
Was he actually talking to the county?
There's no, nothing on the foreseeable future.
Is there any interest?
The few people I spoke to said they favor the city move.
But not countywide, okay? I feel the same way as I did before, like to see a county.
Well, just the announcement of us doing this, there was a lot of action. SUNY Albany took action with banning the plastic straws, other agencies around Capital District.
SUNY, SUNY Albany?
SUNY Albany.
Oh, SUNY, I should have said.
So, there was a lot of, just action, just on us discussing it at the beginning, and for us to back out of leadership, well, just as you say. July has been the hottest month on record in history, this past July. And out of the nine of the top 10, I believe, they've been in the last 10 or 15 years. So, you know, we have some relatively simple steps we can take, incremental steps we can do for environmental action, as well as some of the issues related to litter and garbage. I think it's important for us to be a leader in this regard.
So again, my stance has been, and will always remain the same, is that I'd like to work for state leadership. We'll send the Assembly out bills that are working on, where the straws are optional, where the customer will not automatically given a straw, but if that customer asks for a straw, they're given one. Perhaps we can ask for that straw, paper straw, I don't care about that, but I just think the optional piece is, is the way to go, with the state, the Assembly, and the Senate working on that. And my other problem is enforcement. I know we're saying that code enforcement's going to work on this, I just believe we have too many issues that are in front of us right now. Not, this is not an important issue, and I appreciate the action we're taking, but I just believe that this is just another piece of legislation that, quite honestly, the city's not going to be able to, force. And I'd just like to see the state take leadership, as Mr. Reiki said, the county. I'd just like to see a state that should wait perhaps a little longer to see what county, I think, on there, two pieces in the state.
Good comment.
Well, in regards to the state, there's been something in front of the state for two years, it's crashed in committee every single time. And there's no real indication that it's going to get penned further this year as well. So, if we can keep putting it off, we can keep putting environmental stuff off, but we all see what the crisis, the storms, the various things. Now, granted, not all of that is strictly due to human activity, there's a variety of issues, but certainly, we have our part to play.
But, Mrs. Lewis, so, I think it's really important that you have to start someplace. I think that the straws are the first step. I think after we do the straws, I think we'll get plastic general. And I think we need to be a leader here, as Tony said. We don't, we have to start somewhere. And I had a conversation with Phil Steck, and he thought it was a great idea, because it's dying in the Assembly. If we can start it, then the Assembly can kind of run off what we do. I think it's a, I think it's an important step for us to support the county follow us. I think it's a, I think it's a step in the right direction. I saw, I don't know if anyone watched 60 Minutes last night, all the plastic and, and what's happening in the ocean, and I know we're miles from the ocean, but every, all the water goes to the ocean, flows to the ocean. The plastics don't, they do not biodegrade, and they end up in a big trash receptacle in the middle of the ocean, and they're trying to figure out how to get rid of it. And I think we need to start here, start, you know, at home someplace, because this is a major issue globally. And I know we're just a small city, but I think we can make an impact, I think we can make a difference, and I think it's good legislation.
Other question? I have the votes to that many. Personally, I don't disagree that we should be educating about plastic and plastic use, with them, their styrofoam, and a lot of other issues as well. And I just think, citywide, the enforcement of this, just like the fact that as a city, you have a law that you can't smoke in the car, should we smoke in the car? Absolutely not, never, ever, ever. But we're not enforcing it, because it's not enforceable at the city level. It's got more, somebody driving in from Vermont, who's Schenectady, to see Hamilton, and I've seen people come in from other states and other counties, they have no idea this law is on the book, it's not enforceable. And so, I just, I would like to see a bigger initiative on this. And it's, I guess it's a nice ceremonial thing, but I don't think we're enforcing it, and I would like to see us maybe use education instead, and not, not force it, but just instead say, great day, great retirement. And even, like, as a state, styrofoam is a concern for plastic straws. Yes, Mrs. Lewis?
So, I, I believe that straws are a start, and I believe that once, this with the education, and the fact that we have, we have good support with some of the businesses already, I think everyone will follow line. I don't think this is going to be a heavy lift for code. I think that with social media, and the way people are thinking about recycling now, I think that there'll be enough individuals that call out, help people out on it. You know, you don't have a plastic straw, so long the city is Schenectady, and I think it will help to enforce. I don't think... I don't think we're going to have to have code enforcement go out. I think that it's going to, it's going to happen, you know, just based on social media alone. You know, you're right, and styrofoam is next. I mean, I think we need to, we need to start somewhere, and I think starting with the straw is a good place to start, so.
So, Mr. Paul, you said that you had some, like, informal conversations with colleagues at the county level who support this, but you had joined in the effort?
So, you know. I talked to our city legislators, and they were in support. You can call them up and ask them yourself. But when you have a, what's it, 11, 15? You know, you have, what, six in the city? So that's up to them. They were in favor of the city move. That's what you were asking me to do. I talked, had conversations. You asked for a survey. Survey was done, came back in favor. So that's, that's what we got.
Okay, so I guess I, my understanding of what was asked of the county was, legislature who lived for in the city, but I thought our, our ask was of all members, whether they in the county districts three and four, not just districts two. That was my understanding of the ask. Okay. Did I misunderstand that? I wasn't the one that, but that was my understanding of the ask. And that's for the county.
That was my feeling, exactly. We can make it a county-wide initiative.
Well, I think it's, I think the fact that it's struggling at the state level, and the fact that it's not imminent at the county level shows how, that it's, you know, I don't know, it's not, I mean, it's for the greater good, there's no doubt about that, but it's a lot of nuance and success. So do we have, I guess, beyond even, do we have votes to, let's just start with that. Do we have any votes devoted out of, would we be willing to make a motion? So at this point, it doesn't pass up to me.
Okay.
Do you know there are other options that could be explored? Sorry.
Well, if you want to kind of do it, just pass a resolution asking the county to enact legislation.
Or the state.
Let's make a resolution, not a motion. Oh, I can't make a motion.
Well, yes, sir, I have no issue supporting it at the county level or state level and deciding vote, saying that supports this initiative going forward.
Mr. Paul, maybe how, is, with that, though it's not, but are you comfortable with that as we flow in that direction?
Certainly think it's a step in the right direction. I do think you're seeing, we are seeing our leadership in this regard, and, but it's a step, but I still.
Let me just also add that, I mean, at the city level, we could, since we've done the survey, have businesses who are certainly in favor of it, we could start by just asking those businesses of promoting, wanting to do this, and that also is a good place to start, because they've already expressed the interest and are willing to do it. So we could do that through education, or just, this is all the DSIC, just a place you've already started. So that also helps get to achieve the ultimate goal.
Right, in the same vein in which we could get the word out that there's a law in place, we can also use social media. All right, well, can I have a motion then, that we would send a resolution to the county that we would be in support of, by Stravand, by Mr. Reedy, by Mr. Porterfield, all those in favor, aye, and then also a resolution that we sent to New York State, also saying that we would statewide ban, by Mr. Porterfield, all those in favor, aye. And then we have shareholder of the public hearing for the DSIC district expansion. I believe we've had a thorough update at the last meeting. I would ask if any questions are coming.
We're all set, the public hearing is all set. You've done everything on there, Ren? So ready to go? I just want to make sure you haven't had everything in place. Very good. Thank you.
There you go, right? Flashing signs here.
And last for motion to adjourn. Thank you, by Mr. Reedy, second by Mr. Porterfield, all those in favor. We are adjourned.
We're back into city planning and development.
We're in executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty, we're in executive session for city planning and development.